Okay, we're live.
Thank you very much. Welcome and greetings to everyone that's watching via Zoom. Today, we're holding our Common Council pre-caucus meeting. We hope that you are all safe and well. The items that we'll be dealing with today are items that are time sensitive, that are COVID related, that are money generating. So we're limiting the items that come before the Common Council. We also have a number of Public Works projects that are moving along, that are allowed to move on. We have a number of commissioners online. We have a host of council members. We're going to get started with the agenda. We have Commissioner of Public Works on right now with us. Commissioner Mike Finn? Go ahead, Commissioner, can you hear us?
So I think he's joining through two separate methods, his phone and his tablet. He's just kind of connecting the two together.
Okay, not a problem. We also have, while he's connecting, we can move on to Commissioner Brendan Mahaffey. Brendan, are you on?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. So I'm here related to the Emergency Solutions Grant item that is for you. It is a $4.1 million allocation of, again, Emergency Solutions Grant. I should also say $100,000, just over $100,000 related to Hopewa, which is housing for people with, housing opportunities for people with AIDS. This is critical money at this time that the federal government allocated to the city of Buffalo to respond to the COVID-19 situation in Buffalo, in particular, as it relates to individuals who are homeless or threatened with homelessness. The threat of homelessness will grow as the pause order is lifted in terms of the ban on eviction related to non-payment of rent. So there is a concern on the backside that the city of Buffalo is prepared to assist many of its most vulnerable residents at that point in time, in particular, again, those individuals who are threatened with homelessness. The Department of Community Services, specifically Sue Lamedu, or in particular, I should say, Sue Lamedu has done a tremendous effort, putting together a very thorough budget that reflects her conversations with many of the service providers that are in this area. There are two phases associated with this. One is to, again, assist the current homelessness situation. But then with the current service providers we have, there are a number of items that the Department of Community Services have filed that are contract amendments to make sure that those services are covered with this, with this money. But then, in addition, it is to, again, prepare for the next phase here, when there could be, again, more stress that is put on tenants with the potential outcome being homelessness, which, of course, we want to prevent. And that will be those service providers. Some of them, anyway, will be identified through a request for qualifications that will be issued by the Department of Community Services. The intent is to diversify the number of organizations that can provide these services. The concern being that we want to make sure that organizations are addressing the population or can reach the population that might be most threatened. So, for instance, potentially along the lines of new Americans and the Hispanic community or African-American community, specifically organizations that might have stronger relationships or, you know, have a greater understanding, in addition to our traditional service providers as well. So that is a phase two of this. So in all, it's a $4.1 million commitment of Emergency Solutions Grant money and about just over $100,000 in Hopewa money. They both have a suffix at the end, CD, which means that it is a special allocation from the federal government specifically related to addressing COVID concerns or COVID impact in the city of Buffalo. This, I should also say, is a first, an initial allocation from the federal government. There is already money that has been approved by the Congress for, for the same purposes. That allocation has not been distributed yet to municipalities throughout the US. So there will be more money that the city of Buffalo will also receive in the future for these specific purposes. So that's the broad overview. The item before you goes into much more detail. And again, in terms of some of that detail, Sue Lamedu, I believe, joins us as well today and can speak through a lot of those particulars.
Thank you, Brendan. Any questions for either Brendan or Sue Lamedu?
Mr. Chair? If Brendan or Sue could just give a bird's eye view of how, how this will be used in the community, like just a real small summary of exactly how it would be used.
Sue, are you, Sue, could I ask you to do that?
Um, so the funds are going to be split up among a couple of interventions to help people get housed and maintain their housing. So the first one being the provision of emergency shelter services 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to continue that until August. So that, in the meantime, we can use the other interventions to help people get housing. So we have our rapid rehousing program, which provides short-term rental assistance to folks who have been homeless and are already a set for housing. We also have a light futts rapid rehousing, which will provide a first month's rent and security deposit to individuals who just need a little boost to be able to get into housing. We're also going to be providing assistance to our shelters who had to socially distance and have had to increase sanitization and those types of activities, as well as we're going to increase food opportunities for those shelters as people are often reporting to, for example, the Flickinger Center for a meal, not necessarily that they need housing, but they're coming for a meal. So a few different interventions that will be spread out amongst a few agencies in our request for qualification process. And it should be, we have two years to spend these funds, and we hope to utilize them quickly to help people get and maintain their housing.
Yeah, thanks, Sue. And I know two years is the extended time. I'm sure that we go through it quicker than two years. Is the, the shelter, the city mission, and those type of places, are they included as far as the distribution of any of these funds?
City Mission is not currently an ESG provider, but when we send out the request for qualification, they are included in the list. So we'll be sending it to all of our shelter and continuum of care providers as well.
So they would be possibly eligible also, because I know they're housing a lot of people right now.
Yeah, they would be possibly eligible, should they respond to the RFQ.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mitch?
Thank you. Thank you, Majority Leader. Sue, I just have a quick question for the rental assistance. Is that program mostly run through Catholic Charities?
So for right now, in the first phase of this ESG grant, Catholic Charities has a prevention contract. So we're going to increase their prevention contracts so that they will be able to provide services right now. And then for the request for qualification, you know, there are other providers such as NLS, who goes into Housing Corp., obviously Catholic Charities, and there may be some other people out there who might respond to the RFQ who could do this program well.
Thank you. So for, for right now, if my office gets calls from my constituents needing assistance, they can call Catholic Charities, correct?
Yes, yes, Mitch. Anybody who needs help right now, should contact the intake office at Catholic Charity.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Sue. Any other questions for either Sue or Brendan? No question. We have, we'll mark it for approval, no objections. Thank you very much. We have.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We have Mr. Dow, Mr. Dow, Elena Dow. Do you have, is there something you'd like to speak on?
Yes, sorry, I was trying to unmute the line. We did file the April 2020 cash flow report with the council. I think a couple of items, we wanted to really take a look at, look at the cashier receipts and the cash disbursements for the month. And we know, for the most part, we know revenue has gone down, especially when you look at the month over month for service charges, fines, and sales tax, where our expenses have remained the same. So that's something we definitely need to keep our eye on. We know we wanted to, the city of Buffalo wanted it to the negative of like $12 million this month. But we are anticipating and hopefully still receive that final state payment a month of May to bring us back home from a cash perspective. I don't know if you guys had any questions with that. We know it will go to finance, and we can go in more detail with the cash flow report when it gets, when it goes over to finance. But for the most part, we just want to know and show, like, every month, the cash inflows and outflows for the city of Buffalo, also for the Board of Education. Excuse me, does, any questions? I'm sorry.
The, the money that we're expecting from the state, do we know the amount?
It's 98 million.
98 million?
And that's part of the AIM payment. We get annually, I think it's overall, it's like 161 million we received from the state. This would be the last payment for this fiscal year. So we anticipate to receive that name, 98 million, either the third or fourth week of June.
Any questions for Mr. Dow? No question, thank you very much.
And then second, one more thing, the Controller, she did send a letter to New York delegation to Congress in order, showing her support for the Heroes Act. We all know it's been a hot topic with this forced stimulus package. So she did reach out and just, she wanted to file, let you guys know. She's also concerned and hoping that we do get additional funding for cities and states. As we can see, everyone could use it. She did generate a letter, send it out to New York delegation, letting them provide her support and showing the need that the city need and also other states need also.
Thank you. We had a conference call with Schumer's executive assistant. Has the Controller's Office had meetings with any of our representatives?
To my, to my knowledge, no. And that's why she felt the need to get her message and her voice out, that she's committed and she's aware of the financial needs of the city and anything that she can do to support this group online now or the administration she's willing to do.
Thank you. Any questions? None, we'll send it to finance, thank you.
Thank you.
We have Commissioner Mike Finn. How you doing, Commissioner?
Good morning, everyone.
Do you have a long list of projects?
Yes, I do. I'll, I'll hit the highlights and then open up to questions. Number five, that's the management agreement for the Buffalo Water Board. That, that's a big item, expecting that to go to Finance Committee. Number six and seven are change orders for extra CDBG funds that relate to the Annual Action Plan Amendment that's also on today's agenda. Eight through 11 are pesticide control plans that are submitted annually by those various agencies. 12 through 20 are all reports of bids that I'd be happy to answer questions on. We've, we've put a lot of bids out now that we got our virtual bidding process going, and this is the result of that. 2122 are permission to hire consultants for the construction phase of those two federal projects, Fillmore Avenue repaving and the Saferoots, the school project on Clinton Street. Number 23, permission to hire the consultant for the Fruit Belt subsurface investigation that's been discussed a lot. 24 is permission to hire the Slow Streets consultant. And then the last item, I just wanted to point out, numbers 28 and 29 are appointments for DPW staff members that were listed under police. I just wanted to point that out and make sure that that got put into the right category. Those are for the sanitation division. With that, happy to open up to any questions of Common Council?
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The 23, and thank you for this and moving this forward, Commissioner. This is for those who may be watching, the Fruit Belt, or some of our subsurface challenges and problems, better known, some of them as sinkholes. Do we know when we will, when this investigation will begin? And will there be a portion, I don't know how we'd do it unless it would have to be somewhat virtually, in which the community will be able to advise the investigators of what they have been experiencing?
The first answer, yes, on the public involvement. I think that's a very important part of this project, and I'd like to discuss that further with your office about how to do that virtually. The, the public input is so important on things like this because the residents who live there on a day-to-day basis have the best basis of knowledge for us to start with, and we want to get that. And I think that should be step one, is listen to the community, hear what they have to say, and target our approach from there. And then after that, we can lay out, okay, this is where we're going to go and start digging holes. You're going to start to see action out in the, in the neighborhood.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner, and I really appreciate you saying that, that we start with the people of the Fruit Belt. So again, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Commissioner on the Water Board, we all met with Mr. OJ to discuss, and this is not time sensitive. This is something we can send to finance. I don't know if there's any objections in approving it. We have all met with OJ, and we've had our conversation. Is, is there any reason you think we should send it to finance? I'm just, I wasn't.
From, from my perspective, if you've all discussed this with, with Mr. McFoy, and are comfortable certainly passing it immediately, it is fine with, with our department. We're comfortable with it at Public Works. It's due to be executed July 1st. So that's, I'll leave that to your discretion.
Okay. Thank you. The council member Rashid Wyatt.
Thank you, Majority Leader. And I'm okay with us approving this item. I, I had an extensive conversation with those folks on the Water Board. I am a committee, a committee member. They've done a very thorough job of looking out for our best interest, and I know that they would like to get it approved sooner than later. And if we can approve it today, that'd be great.
Okay. If there's no objections from any of the council members, we'll move to approve it today?
Majority Leader?
Yes, Council President.
I would just suggest, and I'm all for it. Matter of fact, we were just calling him to see if it needed immediate. But he did do the right thing, went to every council member, I believe, really went into in-depth explanation. The only thing I would ask is that, if we're going to prove it today, which I support, that we would give kind of a summary so that the public would know what we are approving, because they haven't been made kind of privy to the inside. It's not secret inside, but the details, without going too far, but enough where people will know why we're voting on it and how important it is in the actual council meeting.
Thank you. I had requested, I don't know, Mr. OJ's on the line. Is he on the line? We had requested, whether, I'm not sure, with short notice. We had our 10 o'clock meeting, and we had discussed possibly inviting him. I don't think he's online. Can you speak to that, Commissioner Finn?
Yeah, I can speak to the high level edit. And one of the things that I'd recommend to put out to the public, there was included in the filing, a summary of the contract. The contract is very long, because it covers a lot of detail. But the, there is a two-page summary document within the filing that touches a lot of the highlights. And if you'd like to, and just give me a moment to open that up on my end, I'd be happy to go through that briefly, if that's what you'd like.
Council President?
I'm getting him on the line now. Possibly Mark is in the back trying to get him on the line right now. And because I'm just looking for a brief summary so that people know exactly what it is.
So we can circle back to that, if you'd like. We can, we're trying to get McDuff, Mr. OJ on the line, and then he can give us a brief summary for those that are watching via Facebook. All right, so we'll start. I see Commissioner Kevin Helfers on the line. Is, is there something you'd like to discuss, Commissioner?
I have four items before your honorable body. Good morning, everyone.
Can he take that background down before he starts?
I don't know how that got on there. Two of them are renewals from existing contracts. And both those contracts were good for a one-year term with four additional one-year periods. One is with G-Tecna. G-Tecna is our electric ticket writer system, very important. And they've been very good, and we've had a very good relationship with them. So I'd like to extend that for an additional year. The second one is with Burr National, otherwise known as Parkion. Most, the majority of the, of the machines, the pain displays that you see on the street are serviced by Parkion, and it's our reporting system and our backend software. I would appreciate approval on that as well for an additional one-year term. And then we have two vehicles that are at our auto impound, which were never claimed after proper notification of the owners and, and/or lien holders, if necessary. One, we will be giving to the fire department who have requested a vehicle, and one, we will be keeping internally with our parking department so that we don't have to expend dollars on new vehicles. That's all I have, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Commissioner Helfer? I think they're all marked for approval.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Member Rashid Wyatt?
I just had a question for Mike. I know that he has a position that they're appointing, and I thought we were having some type of freeze on hiring, and just wanted to ask the question. I don't know if he has the answer or not. I don't know if his hire is part of a project that's included in the pay or where it's going to come out of the city's payroll.
So for hires within Public Works, we've been sticking to promotions where employees are retiring or backfilling promotions that have already occurred. So no new bodies. With the, there is one exception, there's a carpenter that's being appointed. That is to backfill a position, a different position that retired. We're just changing the title. But we are trying to limit not having new bodies as of this moment, being respectful of the city's financial position. But it's important to proceed with promotions, however, that saves us money as opposed to acting time. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. I guess we can get started with top of the agenda. Start from the top.
Council Member, you've also been joined by OJ McFoy.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. Mr. OJ, are you, are you on Zoom or on phone?
I'm on Zoom, sir.
Thank you very much. Council President and some of the council members would like just a brief summary. You don't have to get into everything, just a brief summary of the agreement.
No problem, sir. Thank you. Went right to the page that I needed to. So we're, we're really excited about this latest agreement that we have. It, while it is an expense, is a, we are looking forward to a 10-year agreement with the current numbers being approximately $7.8 million, 7.8379 to be exact, for the year one cost. When we look at what we paid last year and we look at the additional and added services that we've asked for, and those additional added services come in the area of additional onsite managers that will help us with our community engagement, one, and specifically on our key products, which is our replace old lead lines, so our role program, also our Let's Get Water Wise, where, which I really truly appreciate all of the common council members and, and the effort that they've been doing to kind of get the word out on our Let's Get Water Wise affordability program. And also, it's really just so that we can up our standards for the next decade. So we've been negotiating with Veolia. The process started approximately two years ago. Where we went through this process, there are only a handful of companies out throughout the United States that actually perform this type of a service for a system as large and robust as ours. So we've had a lot of going back and forth. So we look at this, and with the additional savings added on to it, we're actually looking as if we are going to be saving approximately 6% off of what we paid last year. So for us, this is an excellent investment. We also have been looking at our, our finances to ensure, you know, during these times that we can actually afford to pay this out and going forward with it. So we are, we are in a good place there. We have no expectations of, of, of rate restructuring. We actually are looking at still ways in which we can ensure that water is affordable here in the city of Buffalo for many of our folks, because it's not necessary. We actually have some of the lowest water rates. But what, what happens is, and as you guys are well aware, when we talk about affordability, it gets in terms of whole house expenses for some of our families that are finding themselves at or below the poverty line. So we've been paying especially close attention there. We've been involved in some equity work along with Veolia and along with our partners here at Water and locally, where we've been focusing in on, on equity and affordability. And this agreement actually allows us to further that as well. So along with them bringing in their purchasing power and their ability to get jobs done, and we've seen a marked improvement over the past 10 years from our previous company that we had, and we expect the next 10 years to make us even stronger. So with that, I'd open up for questions, if any have any.
Any questions? Rashid, Council Member Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. OJ, as far as water rate increases, I think when we had the first call, the meeting, there's no anticipated water rate increase this year, correct?
No, sir. What was, what's programmed in there? We had a CPI adjustment, but we are, we are not looking to do that this year, not with the current stances that we have right now.
Okay. And the increase is based on the computer, the CDI index?
Yeah, yes.
And that's, what's the?
Which is relatively flat right now, Council Member.
What's the max on that for any particular year?
There was, there was no math, max on that one.
Okay. So if, if, because you know, the way the market is looking right now, can we see a dramatic increase over in the next year or two because of our financial conditions throughout the nation?
Well, it's actually a one-year full lookback on, on that CPI adjustment. And then it comes in front of us where we would be looking at, does that make sense for our, our base? So what we've been trying to do in this contract, you know, has that integrated into it as well as our standard rates? We have in there a consumer price index that's added into it. So this one pulls from like the Northeast and some various different areas, especially when it takes into account like gas, you know, oil prices and the like. So it's, it's all over the place on there.
Do, do we have an approval process in that, or that goes strictly through the Water Authority?
That would be, that will be the Water Authority for the CPI. But that has, you have the approval process on this contract, but as far as those things there, that actually goes through the Water Authority.
Thank you.
No problem.
Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, OJ, for getting on. And I appreciate your background a lot more. I know you didn't see Commissioner Helfers, but a lot more than his, which was, you know. The biggest thing, and I'll mention this in the council meeting, one of the biggest things about this community engagement part that the board insisted on, and you also in particular, of engaging our community, because you cannot be in all places at all times. I want to, first of all, thank you for your engagement in the Fruit Belt. Today, we not only approve, we will be approving a contract for some, a study in the Fruit Belt, but you have actually been working with many of the residents in the Fruit Belt to mitigate some of the things. So thank you for the community engagement part and the replacing of lead lines, because that's about health and wellness, especially during a time like this. True second, can you talk about that community engagement? And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Council President, again, I appreciate, you know, the efforts that we're doing here. Appreciate that you've seen it. We appreciate the effort that you have done with us, especially in the Fruit Belt community. As far as the community engagement, this is one of the areas where we feel as if we needed some additional effort. We need someone to be more of a face, connecting our communities. some additional effort. Um, we need someone to be more of a face, connecting our communities. Um, and not, we're not just hiding at Colonel Ward or, or hiding, um, you know, a- at our, uh, Exchange Street offices and we need to be out in that community. So it just can't be myself or the Commissioner, a Commissioner Finn, who are frequently out in the community. We need that liaison that's going to create and build those relationships with water and with our community partners out there. So what we've tasked Veolia with, and here's where the added costs come in, is they're actually going to be bringing in an additional body, um, to fill that role, to be that community, uh, connector. Um, so that's one thing we integrated into this contract because we have to put money behind it to make sure that it happens and that it's programmed in the place.
Thank you. Any other question for McFoy? No questions. We'll go to the top of the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Item number one, receive and file. Item number two, approve. Item three and four to finance, Public Works. Items five through, um, keep on going down, five through, five through twenty-four, approve. Item twenty-five, civil service. Items twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, civil service. Item thirty, South District, uh, food store license, fifteen, sixty, South Park.
Uh, to legislation, please.
Send to legislation. Item thirty-one, approve. Items thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five are approved. Uh, city clerk, items thirty-six through forty-four are receive and file. Submissions, uh, annual action plan, uh, no objections, motion to approve. Item forty-five, this is the resolution that we're going to send back.
If I can talk on this for a moment?
Yes, Council Member Farrelletto.
Thank you. Um, so I think this is going to be, uh, something that really helps local restaurants in the, in the city of Buffalo. So as we know, restaurants have been closed since March fifteenth and they're part of the phase three reopening that New York State has. Um, the phase three could potentially open June sixteenth, meaning restaurants, um, may be able to open on June sixteenth. That's not the city of Buffalo's call on that. Certain metrics have to stay in place. However, seeing what other states have, have done in other cities, there's, it's very likely that when restaurants are allowed to open, there's going to be a limited capacity. Um, some cities and states have allowed restaurants to open at twenty-five percent capacity. Others have been at fifty percent capacity. Um, a couple months ago, I was speaking to the owner of Dash's supermarket who was in Florida, who was telling me in Florida, when they opened, they were at twenty-five percent capacity. However, they were expanding seating outdoors. So what this does, and I appreciate all of my colleagues who have co-sponsored this, this is going to allow restaurants to expand, to include more seats outside. Um, however, I believe we have, we may have to do this in the form of an ordinance amendment. Um, I've spoke to the Commissioner of, of Permits and Inspections. I spoke to Law Department. I spoke with the mayor about this. Everyone seems to agree with the council on this and I think the city officials as a whole want to see our, our restaurants succeed. There's thousands of food service employees in the city of Buffalo, in Erie County. There's fifty thousand people that work in, uh, the food service industry. So it's very important, um, to get this done and I know, um, so we'll be tabling this today. However, I believe we should have an ordinance by the end of the week and we can get, um, get some help for these restaurants to safely expand outdoors and have some, some guidance to, to help. And that'll be very important for the entire city of Buffalo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, would any of the council members?
Majority, Majority Leader?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm on the, the phone, so I couldn't see if anyone was raising their hand. Sorry. Yeah.
Go right ahead, Chris, and then after Chris.
No, go, Rashid, Rashid, go ahead.
Rashid, go ahead. No, I just want to be added to the resolution. I didn't know if my name, I saw the names, but I had added my name as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Scanlon?
Yeah, I just, thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to thank Council Member Farrelletto for not just putting this resolution together and ultimately the ordinance amendment, putting it together, but, um, working the phones as much as he has on this. This is, um, while statutorily not time-sensitive, um, in real life, in real time, it is very time-sensitive. Um, in order to get this in place for these restaurants, uh, on day one that they're able to open, to expand their capacity to, um, limit the damage to their bottom lines, um, and kind of stem the tide as we slowly reopen here. It's extremely important that we have this in place as soon as possible. So I just wanted to thank him very quickly.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other council, Council President?
So, um, I, obviously I support this. Should we table or, and this is a, a question and of course the sponsor, uh, or should we adopt this because it is a resolution showing support? Uh, instead of tabling so that it could start moving toward the amendment? Um, would be my only concern. Why table it and just set it to the side? Let's get it, let's get it moving. In case the, uh, city starts, the state starts to open back up. I don't know how Corporation Counsel feels about it or the sponsor, but I'd like to see it move forward a little bit.
Okay, the only thing that I was, the only thing that I was concerned about was if we adopt this but had to make some changes in the ordinance amendment to have conflicting information on, but I'll gladly, um, we can gladly discuss that in the next couple hours with Corporation Counsel and, um, before the council meeting at two o'clock. So I, I hear what you're saying to show that the council's in supportive, in support of it with the resolution. Um, but yeah, we'll just, why don't we, uh, couple hours and we'll go from there.
Okay. All right. Send it without recommendation? All right. Uh, next. Um, number forty-six, adopt. Forty-seven, South District, Home Rule.
Yeah, you thank you, Majority Leader. The, the next two items, there's, um, Home Rule messages to adjust the service time for two members of Buffalo Police Office, Buffalo Police Department. We have actually adopted this in, uh, the several, several past years, um, in order to try and correct their service time. This is, um, it's just a matter of not getting through the state legislature each of the past few years. So this is something that we've all agreed on in the past and, um, something that's actually time-sensitive if we could move on today because I think the state legislature is going to take it up later in the week.
Okay. Motion to adopt items forty-seven and forty-eight. Forty-nine, calling for recruitment and hiring unemployed residents as COVID-nineteen contact. Council, Alec Getton University? What would you like?
I would hope that we can adopt this item. Um, we know that the governor is pushing for, um, contact tracers in a big way. And, um, as I've been doing testing in my district, I've talked to a couple of the doctors and they feel very strongly to have contract tracers in those communities to be very helpful and effective. Um, so we're trying to work with the legislature to see that we can be certain um, that those individuals who are unemployed and some of those low and impoverished communities have the opportunity to be contract tracer, contact tracers to make certain that, um, their, the process is very effective.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adopt? Uh, item forty-nine, unemployed residents. Okay, that's, uh, adopt and item fifty was tabled. That's the body of the whole. Okay. Any other questions? No other questions. Thank you. We'll see you at two o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.